Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 4th, 2017, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. We have one item in our old business tonight, that's the West Lawn, Section 4, preliminary plat for eighty-four lots on thirty-four point one acres, zone PUD, located along Breach, Birch Tree Drive, and Welbs Retreat Lane. D.R. Horton Incorporated is the developer. Mr. Blomley, good evening, sir.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, and good evening members of the Planning Commission. The first item tonight is, you may recall at our December twenty-first day meeting, we had a preliminary plat for West Lawn, Section 4. There were some issues with the preliminary plat, specifically with meeting minimum zoning requirements. This property is part of a plan development, and so the plan is required to meet the minimum requirements that are set forth in the PUD zoning plan. Since that time, we've worked with Mr. Mulchan and Mr. Taylor of SEC, representing the developers, to bring the lots up to the minimum standards. There were some lots that they had to request minor deviations for, to the plan development, in other words deviations to the standards that were minor enough that could be approved administratively, but the majority of the lots, they made comply with the minimum requirements. So staff now feels comfortable with the proposed plan, and that it meets the requirements of the plan development zoning. So with that being said, we would recommend that any approval of this plan be made subject to all staff comments, including the original staff comments from the December twenty-first Planning Commission meeting, that have been included in the agenda packet before you, as well as the condition that the walking trail that was required per the West Lawn PUD master plan be, consist of a, of an asphalt surface, that it be paved. They were showing that the, they were showing the walking trail to be of crushed stone. The zoning plan requires it to be paved, so the construction plans will need to be, will need to be revised before permits are issued on the infrastructure to make sure that the walking trail meets the minimum requirements of being paved. With that being said, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Taylor and Mr. Mulchan are here. If there are no questions, we would recommend that any approval be subject to all staff comments.
Okay, any questions or comments?
None. I'll make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. We have four public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is a zoning application for approximately point four seven acres located along Savannah Ridge and Hyannis Drive to be rezoned from Office General to RS-10. Marijuana Akayama is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider an application to rezone property located south of Savannah Ridge and east of Hyannis Drive shaded blue on the map on the screen before you, from its current zone of OG, and that seems to be General Office District, to be zoned RS-10, and that's Single Family Residential District. And the RS-10 district has a minimum lot size of ten thousand square foot lots. And there are no minimum house sizes with any of our bulk zones, so that does reference the lot size. This property is located on the corner, as I mentioned, Savannah Ridge and Hyannis Drive. It's adjacent to developed city single family subdivision, Savannah Ridge, to the east, and that is zoned RS-12, which has a minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet. And then to the south is the villages at Savannah Ridge, which are zoned RS-8, have a minimum lot size of eight thousand square feet. So you can see it's adjacent to two different zones, residential zones, one with twelve thousand minimum, one with eight thousand minimum, so they've kind of split the difference and asked for a zoning of RS-10 with a minimum lot size of ten thousand square foot for these properties. The properties to the north across Savannah Ridge are also zoned OG. We've seen some plans for development, but have not seen development come to fruition. On the corner of South Church Street, this is just off the intersection of South Church and Savannah Ridge, is the Camino Real Restaurant, and to the south is a planned development of PCD, which would allow a community shopping center. It hasn't developed yet, but we do expect development for that community shopping center to happen in the near future, and I think I described this about the next three years, I expect to see something happen there. The applicants have submitted some illustrations of potential possible layouts, and they believe they could possibly create two lots here. Those lots would need to meet minimum standards, and they'd have to have a building envelope that could support houses, and if not, then they'll only have the opportunity to have one single family house here. The applicants have, in the past, submitted a site plan for this to develop with an office, but that just didn't come to fruition, so they think it'd be better served to be developed as two, as two single family lots, and they're anticipating two single family lots. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is here, and he's representing the applicants, and he doesn't have a presentation, but if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. This, these two lots will, of course, be at the entrance of the Savannah Ridge subdivision, but they're not anticipated to be a part of the HOA, or a part of the formal documents that have created that subdivision. I thought you might be interested in that. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing, and then make your determination city council.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Green? You said Mr. Roundtree does not have a presentation?
He doesn't, but he's here.
I'm shocked. Okay, thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Any comments or questions? Before we open the public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing, sir. If there's no questions from members of the Planning Commission, before I open the public hearing, let me briefly go through our rules that we conduct our public hearings by. We'll open each public hearing, ask you to come forward to speak at the microphone. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and give your address, and then keep your comments to no more than three minutes. If you have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions, and we'll try to answer those questions at the conclusion of the public hearing. Make all your comments and questions to the Planning Commission, if you would. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Thank you. My name is Alan Stone, and I live at 130 Savannah Ridge. I'm the, my driveway separates my house from that lot that we're referring to. We've moved in to that area 2009, September of 2009. Shortly after that, we had the heavy torrential rains in 2010, and as you all know, that is a very low-lying area, and we have a lot of drainage problems. I had flooding in my backyard, and since that time, it's happened a couple of other times. I know that the engineering group here has gone out and done some work in the area to try to alleviate the problem, but that lot that you're talking about used to be a retention pond. So, my concern is, I don't mind a house being built, I'm a little worried about two houses being built on that lot, because I'm worried about the drainage and the damage it could cause to my home. Simple as that. In fact, Clyde was out there today, we talked, and he could actually see where my driveway is sinking, because there's the separation between the lots there, and it rolls down. The access points to the drains that are underneath that area are above grade, and I have a problem with that.
Okay.
Okay? That's, that's my comment.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Whitaker, or Mr. Blomley, or Ms. Green, or Mr. Huddleston, or whoever, can you address this gentleman's comments about drainage and retention pond?
I think Mr. Huddleston and I can probably help. We do have some illustrations showing that there are very significant drainage easements located on this property. I've got the illustrations pulled up on the screen now. So this entire area along Savannah Ridge is a recorded drainage easement, and along this area here, and then it cuts to the south. And part of, staff has asked the applicants to look at that, and we've consulted with engineering staff, knowing that that's not an easement that can be abandoned, because it does serve a purpose and function. It's not something that we can just get rid of. So we were concerned with how they're going to lay the lots out, to make sure that they have, the lots will meet our minimum lot size, but we want the building envelopes to actually work. They have to stay out of the drainage easements, they have to meet the setbacks, and then they have to respect that. And Mr. Huddleston, I don't know if he has anything additional to add about the drainage for this area, but we are aware of those recorded easements on these lots, and they have to respect that.
There's nothing of your knowledge about that lot being designated a detention area?
Just those areas that the easements are in, not outside of that, so not this inner area.
Ms. Huddleston?
Good evening Chairman Lamb, Sam Huddleston, City Engineering Department, members of the Plan Commission. The property in question was not designated as a stormwater management area. Because of the nature of the ground and the drainage system there, it functioned that way, but it was never intended to do that. And the, a previous owner actually, with development plans, actually rerouted some of the drainage in there, and placed fill on the lot, which was consistent with what we had anticipated. And there are two separate drainage systems, the system that serves the gentleman who spoke, and then the system that serves here. And there was, he is correct, we're aware of the very low conditions of his backyard, and we've worked on some of the upstream projects to divert and reduce drainage headed to that system. That's a very significant drainage system that is there. And then we'll have the opportunity with some future development projects to make some additional improvements on that.
What about improvements on the, I think he said there are some above-grade drainage features on this lot? I don't know what he was talking about specifically.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of that either, and his driveway, his driveway is located separate on his lot of record, and it's not associated with any of the drainage work there, but he made a statement that the driveway was settling, so I'm not sure how that's related, but I'd certainly be glad to hear from him tomorrow, and see if there's a relationship between the driveway and the existing drainage system on this subject property. It's very close, but they are on separate lots of record.
I think his comment, if I wrote it down correctly, was access points are above grade.
Well, access points to the drainage system. There's actually area drains where the two pipes come together, area drains to allow water off of those lots to get into it, and change direction and slope of the pot. Very big pipe through there, that's probably a thirty-six inch or better pipe, so you don't make changes in directions there, just casually. You actually have to put a structure in, and a structure requires that you have an access point at the top.
And so, speak to us a little bit, or speak to me, about drainage easements in and of itself. So if these lots are approved, does the drainage easement just stay as it is, or are improvements have to be made as part of that drainage easement to, to improve the drainage of the lot in question?
I think it's possible, Mr. Halliburton, that it could be both, or either. The developer could present a plan to us that works with the drainage system existing, and relies on the drainage system in our roadway as well. If you understand our curb and gutter streets, gutter is a drainage system as well.
I'm with you.
And so the builder would, the builder, developer would have the ability to route their drainage to the street, Hyannis Drive, Savannah Ridge Drive, or route it to the drainage system that's in the easement. So that's one possibility. Another possibility is that they might see the benefit of reconfiguring the drainage easements to create a better building envelope, or a more convenient system, and we'd be open to that too, but I can say that it would be substantial cost to reconstruct that drainage system. My suspicions are that they would, would rely on the drainage easement as it exists, and then work their lot grading and drainage to accommodate the system that's there.
Okay. Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
Chairman, I do believe it would be appropriate, if in fact these are approved, to require site plans due to the drainage nature, to have submitted and approved prior to any construction being done on the lots. And that is not uncommon, especially when we have a tight envelope, or a lot of drainage easements, and would have that late, if in fact we do, we'd have a site plan that we'd look at and get approved, feel comfortable with, and also have the, if you will, the foundation state, to so we know that they're not getting any setbacks, and make that a part of the condition of approval.
Well, we'll make that a part of the condition of approval of the plat, when we see the plat for the zoning. You're deciding on the land use, and whether or not you think this request is appropriate.
Okay. Mr. Huddleston, thank you very much, sir. Any other comments or questions from the Planning Commission? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for approval of the request to RS-10.
Subject staff comments?
On the zoning request, yes, sir, sure.
Staff comments? Motion is made for approval. Subject staff comments, is your second?
I'll, I'll second it with a comment, and that is, as anything else as we do with respects to this, or that we cannot put more water or more drainage on anyone else, hopefully this will improve the situation versus cause any more harm, so I'll, I'll make a second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next public hearing is annexation plan. Sir, you might want to give Mr. Huddleston at some point, if you wanted to talk to him tonight, he might be able to talk to you, or you can call him in the morning.
I should call him in the morning.
Thank you, sir. Annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately point seven acres of east overall Creek Road right-of-way, City of Murfreesboro, Engineering Department is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you. This next public hearing is for you to consider the annexation of right-of-way of east overall Creek Road, of course located along east overall Creek Road. And we mentioned that this would be coming to you when you considered an annexation petition for the adjacent property made by Mr. David Alcorn. It was a petition that was, when you considered the plan of services and the annexation, it was part of three separate parcels, one by Mr. Alcorn, and one across Ms. Gillie, who's to the north, and one across the street, which was the Ruckert Donnell Foundation. And after we had initiated the study, and began the annexation, and done the research, and came to you to public hearing, we, we got information from Mr. Alcorn that he, some of the lots that he wanted to create would have frontage along east overall Creek Road, and use east overall Creek Road as access. And considering that these, that this road is a substandard street, I would say very substandard street, we became concerned with the, them utilizing that for access, mostly for service delivery, so the delivery of our essential services, and our weekly services, we utilize, of course, vehicles in, on east overall Creek Road. I don't, I don't know that you could have a fire truck or garbage truck pass a regular vehicle, so we want to require improvements on east overall Creek Road, and as a part of that, it would be easier, and we could apply the city standard to the improvements to this portion of the road, if it were in the city. So we said, rather than stopping the process, we would let that annexation go through, and come back through, and get this portion of the road. So this is a plan of services, it's a bit odd, because it is just for a little bit, it is just for right-of-way. So there are a lot of services that right-of-ways don't need, and so that's indicated in the plan of services, and you've had that to read. It is contiguous with current city limits, and it, we anticipate there being ways to improve this road, so that it can adequately support our service delivery vehicles. There's no zoning change requests, because of course, right-of-ways don't really have zonings. We put a zoning on them for mapping purposes, but it's really not very relevant. So this is a companion annexation to Mr. Alcorn's annexation, although it is a separate annexation and plan of services. So you'll need to conduct a public hearing on the matter of the annexation and the plan of services. We've included a letter from Mr. Huddleston in the packet, requesting, Mr. Sam Huddleston, from our engineering department, requesting that this right-of-way be included, or be annexed, so that we can have jurisdiction over the review of that right-of-way. And after which, you'll have to, you'll take action on the annexation and plan of services.
Okay. Any questions of the staff?
The only question I have, I'm making an assumption that any improvements on this road would be as part of the city side, meaning the new subdivision versus any encroachment on the existing county lots.
There wouldn't be a situation where we would take county property to improve the road, and we would rely on Mr. Alcorn to pay for those improvements as well.
Okay.
And I expect for them to be, of course, the road needs to be widened, and on his side, there would be sidewalk, and then at, there would be a turnaround, there has to be a turnaround, I think, where the roads loops. They'll have to do a little bit of a different design, but something where our vehicles can, you know, garbage truck can get out of there, because they'll be providing services to those lots that front on overall.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I'll open the public hearing, and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no further questions or comments about the Planning Commission, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item C is an annexation plan of services and an annexation petition for approximately fifty-five point six acres located along Last Cassis Pike. Anna Elrod and Rutherford County Government is the applicants. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you Chairman Lamb. Our next annexation tonight is for property located along the west side of Last Cassis Pike, just to the north of the intersection of Last Cassis and Dejarnet Lane. The subject property itself totals about forty-six point one acres, that's the main property. You'll see that there is actually a little point four acre strip going back to Cushing Avenue on the west side of the property, a little appendage going back there, which would make a roadway access back to Cushing Avenue for the, for the development plan, which will be the subject of the next public hearing. The total of private property that we would be looking at annexing in this request is forty-six point five acres. The total acreage that you mentioned when you read the agenda, fifty-five point six acres, includes quite a bit of right-of-way that we have included in the study area. You'll see that we have included the Last Cassis Pike right-of-way in front of the subject property, extending all the way down south of the intersection of Dejarnet Lane and Last Cassis Pike. And we've also included the right-of-way of Dejarnet Lane going from Last Cassis Pike westward toward the existing city limits. In order to keep from creating an island of county in the city limits, we have left the ever-present ten-foot strip on a section of Dejarnet Lane right-of-way, so that we could get as much right-of-way of Dejarnet Lane in the city limits as possible, and as well as getting all the Last Cassis Pike right-of-way to include the approaches at the intersection with Dejarnet Lane, as well as the signal elements there. That signal right now is located in the, in the county, and the city maintains it with a contract with the county, but with this annexation, that entire signalized intersection would be coming into the city limits, instead of being located outside the city limits. Properties within the urban growth boundary, and both properties, both the county property, which is that appendage along Cushing Avenue, as well as the Elrod property, have been formally petitioned in writing for annexation, and they are contiguous with the existing city limits. The plan of services is included in your agenda materials. It does indicate that the city will be able to provide services to the subject property. Sewer is not immediately available to the property, but can be made available. Sewer is actually along Cushing Avenue, just near the Oakland Middle School, and the applicants have acquired a public utility easement along Bushman Creek, so that sewer can be extended through the Rutherford County property, along the east side of Cushing Avenue to the subject property, so that sewer can serve the subject property. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the annexation, and just for the benefit of the public in the audience, the first public hearing is for the annexation only, and the next public hearing that we will be conducting after this one will be for the zoning plan, which I think typically the zoning plan is what most people are interested in speaking regarding. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions? Okay, I'll open the public hearing for the annexation at this time.
I'm Bobby Houston. I live at 2859 Oakview, and that's the one that just comes directly to it. When I bought the house years ago, they said all that was in a flood zone. Since I've lived there, I've seen it underwater like three to four times at least, way on up there. The flood zone on the paper is not where the flood zone is. The other problem we got is like, years ago, coming signs dumped tons and tons of plastic all over, and it was stacked up bigger than a two-story house high, and it caught on fire. And this other gentleman, the other gentleman from, lives on Last Cassis, you know, he was there, saw it too, and it burnt for weeks, and it was tons of plastic that burned down into the ground. And so, we're, we had asked for a soil sample test thing, and one of my neighbors had called somebody, the EPA for the state, to come out there and do a soil test, but we're asking like if we can get a copy of the soil test when it does come in. And since I'm the only neighbor on my, I'm on Oakview Drive, I guess my main concern is the blasting. I had talked to my insurance company, I'm, I'm just right on where it's going to be blasting. Like, he said the insurance won't cover, like, my bricks start cracking, or my walls start cracking, well, you're an insurance agent. The insurance won't cover that. Only thing it would cover, like a rock flew over. So if this does get approved, I'd like to have something where they put money in a, in a fund, or a written agreement saying that, like, if my bricks start cracking apart, that I don't have to go buy, get a lawyer to get my, get my house fixed. And so we, we'd like to get something in writing, or a escrow fund, or something, for when that happens. And I've got another situation with my dog. I got a dog that has heart attacks nearly, any kind of noise, and, you know, I'm going to have to go out, buy pills or something, to dope my dog up that whole time. And the neighbor, at the very end, that's the one that's right next to where the building's going to be, I'd, I'd asked the people before about maybe putting a rock fence up. I had talked to him, and he's not really wanting a rock fence, but is there a way that they can put, like, dividing our subdivision up from that, put a privacy fence, and since he's the neighbor that's down there, it's the Wilson. And he had said, you know, he'd like to see a fence go down through there, like, when we turn down our road to go home, that we're not looking at all that. And, and one of my main concerns is, I had brought it up about, y'all just got the one road going out, and the reason I kept on about another road, because looking in there, all them houses and stuff, everybody's going to come over here at this road that's right next to our subdivision, to get up to the main highway. So we're going to hear, I hear them down at the corner of the other, Emery, just like they was coming down our street, but if this is real close, and everybody's coming out of them villas and cottages, and they're going to have to go way down there to my street to turn up, is there a way to get another entrance where we ain't got everybody in that whole sub, you know, complex, going over there at that one road, and there probably going to be shining lights coming in, which a privacy fence probably would help that. But, like- But like I say, I feel, I feel for the Wilsons, 'cause he's the one right there at the corner, and he wasn't able to go to the other one 'cause he was in South Carolina. But the, like I say, the main thing is, you know, if it, if I've seen water halfway up that thing, the thing on here don't show it flood zone, but I personally have seen the water get up, take up half of that thing, you know? If they're gonna build anything, put a nursing home or homes or whatever up close to the road where they're not gonna get underwater. But it, it's been up, way up past where the flood zone shows on this thing. Plus the environmental thing, if you start doing ditches and all that, and all that melted plastic gets down in that stream. And I brought up the issue about it, maybe flooding ours, you know, our water runs down to that. And I'm worried, you know, like they'll get over there and blow something up or what, and the next thing you know, we're, we're having to deal with water where now we don't, we don't really, you know?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Appreciate your comments. Anybody else? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. What about the flooding and the blasting?
Chairman Lamb, some of the gentleman's concerns would probably be better addressed during zoning, such as the, the second entryway. As far as the blasting, you know, I'd say it's, it's likely that a, that the developer will conduct a pre-blast survey and, and any, to be able to compare photographs of the surrounding houses before and after blasting and to see if there are any damage. Blasting complaints are also, can, can be relayed to the City Fire Marshal's Office for investigation as well. With respect to drainage and flooding, Mr. Huddleston may wish to, I know Mr. Huddleston has looked at this property with regards to the way it drains. I have brought up on the screen, a copy of the, the flood map. You'll see the area in pink, which runs directly along the channel of Bushman Creek, is the floodway of Bushman Creek. And with the development plan, that will be the subject of the next public hearing. You'll see there is a bridge proposed to cross the floodway of Bushman Creek. And then the speckled blue area is the hundred-year floodplain of Bushman Creek.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley, Chairman Lamb. This area was studied and mapped by FEMA, made a part of our recognized flood, special flood hazard area, and we believe the maps to be accurate there. And there's a very generous floodplain and floodway. And as we've observed that area over the years, I'm not aware that, that any event has forced Bushman Creek to be higher than the predicted flood elevations from our, our flood study. And we'll review the applicant's development plan as we would any plan for compliance with the floodplain regulations and our stormwater management ordinance. And certainly the plans we've looked at so far show their intent to do that. Now I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Huddleston?
What about the soil test piece to the puzzle?
I think the applicant, Mr. Halliburton, the applicant is aware of this concern or statement. I'm not sure, personally, I haven't, haven't fully investigated, but I'm not sure that, that, that they're concerned that there's still remnants of the plastic there. But certainly if, if there are, they'll be dealing with that and taking care of that. The, the, any, any samples that are taken that are for government inspection, EPA, state of Tennessee are public record. Samples that are taken for a private property owner, unless they're shared with a government agency, are private. So I, I don't think we have the, I, I'm not aware of any soil samples have been taken. I'm not aware that there is enough information available to suggest that soil samples need to be taken. But I, I think the applicant certainly heard the testimony, and, and if, if information's discovered that, that leads to them to that concern, we'll work with them and they'll take appropriate steps to mitigate it. And, and if those sample results are made public record, we'd certainly be glad to share them with, with anybody as we would any other public record.
Okay.
Mr. Halliburton, at the neighborhood meeting that we had, that came up, the applicant is very aware of the developer of that. He said he was gonna have soil borings done. We will get copies of those, but he is very aware of that. And I'm sure he would not want to proceed if in fact there was hazardous material he would have to deal with. So he is, is anxious to find out about that as anybody. So we have talked to the developer about that.
And we've also heard conflicting accounts of just the, the intensity of the operation that occurred decades ago and the amount of plastics that were on site. So I think that the, the environmental analysis that's done will reveal the impact of what happened years and years ago.
Yes, and whether it's industrial-related materials like this or farming operations with storage tanks or, or farming operations and debris piles and those sorts of things, it's not uncommon to encounter those in land development. And, and, and so they're, they're dealt with as they're discovered. And certainly we don't, we, we don't see the suggestion that there is a, a major environmental issue associated with this at this time.
Mr. Hudson, what is the timeframe in which, once you order the test for soil?
Yes, it's generally about two weeks for, for regular laboratory analysis for, for the variety of chemicals that, that you might look for in that situation.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Huddleston? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay. Pertaining to the annexation request, if there's no other questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion, will you approve? Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. The final public hearing this evening is a zoning application for approximately 46.5 acres located along Last Cassis Pike to be zoned PRD simultaneous with annexation. Laurel Stone PRD, Goodall Homes LLC is the applicant's. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you Chairman Lamb. This is for the same property that we just considered for annexation. The applicants are requesting to have the property zoned PRD, planned residential district simultaneous with annexation. The property totals 46.5 acres. The property is directly to the south of the Emery Estate subdivision, which the gentleman along Oakview Drive lives in. It's about a 10 or 12 home subdivision located in the unincorporated county off of Emery Road, which is just to the north of the subject property. To the east of the subject property, across Last Cassis Pike are some estate single-family lots, as well as Dollar General and a church. To the south of the subject property is East Pitts Lane, a substandard county road, and there's a church across East Pitts Lane, as well as a single-family residence. To the west and southwest of the subject property are the Oakland Middle School and Oakland High School, and further to the west is the Huntington Place subdivision, which is zoned RS 10, 12, and 15. Applicants are requesting the PRD zoning district for a total of 199 single-family attached homes in two different types called the cottages and the villas. And Mr. Mulchan with SEC will go over those two types of homes in the, in the coming moments on a PowerPoint presentation. Just a few, a few words of that, about that before he goes into his presentation. While neither housing type will be age-restricted, they will be age-targeted in that they will cater to a demographic that wishes to step down to maintenance-free living. The 149 cottage units, 149 cottage units will all be two-bedroom units, and they'll be alley-accessed. There'll be public streets in the development, but all of the cottages will be alley-accessed and will have no driveways off of the public streets. Mr. Mulchan will go over the architecture and the specifics of those units in just a moment. Then on the, the northern perimeter of the development will be the villas. The villas will be no more than two units attached to each other, and they will all consist of front-entry garages off of the public streets. All units will be on their own lot of record, so these will not be part of a horizontal property regime. They will be considered single-family attached units. But one of the main differences between the RV zone, which is where we see other types of zero-lot line, single-family developments, and this is that the cottages have more than two units attached to one another. As you can see, there are buildings of, that contain three units and buildings that contain four units. They will all be attached, but they will all be on their own lot of record. So when someone buys a unit, they will not only be buying the, the structure, they will also be buying the front yard and the backyard behind it as well. So it'll be its own lot of record, but it will just be attached to at least one other unit. There were several, several points of discussion that were made during the, the Planning Commission Work Session on December 21st. One was with regards to the parking. Now, because of the demographic that, that this is targeting, as well as the, the fact that three-fourths of the units are only going to be two bedrooms at most, the, the applicants are proposing to meet their minimum parking requirements for most of the units by using the garages as, towards the minimum parking requirements. Now in, for traditional single-family detached homes, we do require four spaces per dwelling unit. And so they are proposing to achieve the minimum four spaces required, which would typically be in driveway, required to be driveway spaces. They're proposing to achieve those with two spaces being in the garage for all but what are classified as the perimeter lots, which are the lots along Last Cassis Pike and the lots along Pitts Lane will have 35-foot-deep driveways which can accommodate four parking spaces. Now initially at the work session meeting, they were proposing to address what staff mentioned to the applicants that was a concern of staff and a concern, that, that would be a concern of the Planning Commission, was the, was providing guest parking as well to address some of the lack of driveway spaces. And so at the work session, they were showing 114 guest parking spaces, and on the revised plans, they have added 31 additional guest parking spaces for a total of 145 guest parking spaces that have been scattered throughout the development. And I know that the Planning Commission, one of the areas that the Planning Commission asked the applicant to provide more guest parking was along the, the southern perimeter. And so you can see at the very southern end of Road B, they have added some additional guest parking areas there, and I believe along the southern private alley off of Road F on the, the western boundary, they have added some additional guest parking areas there off the private alley. So a total of 145 guest parking spaces. Also, in addressing the, the Planning Commission's discussion at the work session, one of the things that, that Mr. Smotherman specifically said that he thought would be a good idea would be to provide a, a sidewalk system along the frontage of Last Cassis Pike and Pitts Lane. Of course, with Last Cassis Pike and Pitts Lane being substandard roads, this would not be a traditional sidewalk in the public right-of-way, but they are proposing a sidewalk along, through the front yards of those units that would, that would be on the, on the private property and still achieve that pedestrian circulation around the development. With the, the targeted demographic, the walkability of this neighborhood is important, and, and they realize that and are providing that amenity along the frontage of those lots. The developer hosted a neighborhood meeting on December 21st at 6:00 PM at St. Mark's United Methodist Church. It was well-attended. We had about 15 to 20 neighboring property owners in attendance, despite the fact that it was only four days before Christmas. And there was some good discussion, and the developer, I think, has been able to, was able to address many of the concerns of the, of the surrounding property owners. So with that being said, I'll invite Mr. Mulchan to come to the podium and give the Planning Commission his presentation.
Evening Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission, Rob Mulchan, SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Maverick Green with Goodall Homes. Goodall Homes will be the developer and builder of the homes and the subdivision itself. Goodall Homes is a well-respected development company here in middle Tennessee. It was recently in 2004 awarded National Home Builder of the Year by the National Home Builders Association. So they come along with a good reputation, not only locally, but also nationally as well. I want to go through a short presentation tonight on Laurel Stone itself. As you can see, the site we talked about is just north of Dejarnet Lane and along the western side of Last Cassis Pike, just to the east of the Oakland Middle School area. As Matthew talked about, the Huntington Place subdivision, you've got a mixture of RS 10, RS 12, and RS 15 lots on that property. There's also a small PRD just to the north as well. There's a couple of quick views of the surround, of the property itself. This is a view on south on Last Cassis Pike as you're venturing towards Pitts Lane. The property, we're looking at developing is on the right. This is a view of Cushing Avenue as you're heading past Oakland Middle, heading towards where we'll be making our connection to Cushing Avenue. This is a view on Pitts Lane. Our property is to the right-hand side of this view. And this is also a view on Oakview Drive as you come to the cul-de-sac that abuts the property itself. So this is a view towards the property. These are a couple of homes, existing homes along Oakview Drive right there at the end of the property next to ours. This is also existing homes on Cushing Avenue over to Huntington Place subdivision. Proposed plan itself requesting a PRD. We're looking at 199 dwelling units. The overall scope of this, it will incorporate two different products, as Matthew talked about. One will be a cottage, so there's 149 of those, and there'll be villas as well. The cottages will be a solely alley-loaded product that will come off a private alleyway. The villas will be accessed from the front, so they'll have, you say, front-entry garages along public roadways. The overall project will incorporate underground utilities. We'll also have a HOA. The, as Matthew talked about, these are going to be sold fee simple, and they'll be more or less a, lost PowerPoint. Fee simple, but this will be more age-targeted, or what's called a move-down marketplace. So that's a, a buyer who's looking at moving to a home, owning residence, but also doesn't want the upkeep. So from the HOA standpoint, they will maintain the grounds in and around the homes, so that'll be, that's part of the overall buying structure of these age-targeted products. There is no limitation on what age you are, it's just that we, you know, it's geared towards based on the fact that you have homes that are basically two or maybe even a third bedroom option on the villas. So it's really, you know, you don't have a lot of room for families to move in, so this is more or less for those who are retirees or looking to get ready to retire or just looking for something simple to live in on that side. As Matthew talked about, we will definitely be providing more than enough parking spaces, whether it be on the parking garage, I mean, actually the garage themselves, or through the parking pads behind them. But as we also talked about, we increased the additional guest parking spaces. Now I know we, during the workshop, there was asked to add some spaces to the southeastern area. We added 15 spaces to that side, and we also added another 16 spaces on the western side of Bushman Creek as well. Solid waste will be maintained through the city. They'll be for both the public and private streets, for the private alleyways incorporated. Solid waste currently does that in other developments throughout the city. We'll also be looking at utilizing, streetlights will be incorporated in both the private and in the public street side. We'll be working with MED to make certain that those are all in compliance with themselves on that. Going through the cottage lots, 149 one-to-two-story homes, minimum 1,200 square feet. Minimum two bedrooms, these are mostly two-bedroom units. We have going alley-loaded two-car garages. We'll have decorative garage doors with a mixture of colors, so they'll be matching the trim work that's associated with the actual unit itself, and as we sold fee simple. Building materials, front elevations will be primarily masonry with a maximum of 15% with the vinyl product. That's more for like the dormers and gables of the units themselves, as you can see on the elevation below. Sides will be cement board siding. Rear will be the same as the fronts with the opportunity to utilize cement board siding. Vinyl will only be used in trim and soffit areas on the units themselves. Vinyl will only be used in trim and soffit areas within the units themselves. Perimeter, there's two different types of lots, as Matthew talked about. There'll be a set of perimeter lots, which are the ones along Pitts Lane and Last Cassis Pike. Those will have a forty-foot front setback, so you have some good setback off these two existing roadways that will allow for the inclusion of the extra sidewalk along the front of these two and incorporate a pedestrian loop along this portion of the property. And then again, the rears of these will have a thirty-five-foot rear setback, so the garage, so you have the opportunity to park four cars on the backs of these units as well besides the two spaces in the garage. Interior lots, interior lots, as you can see, indicated in the yellow. These will have a smaller front setback, so these will be ten feet off the, the right-of-way, so that you're going to have a really good street presence in regards to these being up close, creating good streetscape. Sides will be five foot. The corner front yards will be fifteen feet, and then the rears will be twenty, so they'll have an opportunity to park two cars in the parking pad outside, plus the two cars dedicated on the inside based on restrictions and the covenants for the HOA. And then we get to the fifty age-targeted villas. These will be the front-entry garage. These will be one- and two-story homes. These will go up to a minimum of fourteen-hundred-square-foot living area. They'll be two bedrooms and optional third bedroom, so this is what kind of makes the differentiation besides the front-entry garage, will be the opportunity for a third bedroom in these units. These will be front-entry, as I said. And also do the decorative garage doors with mixtures of colors to match the trim work, and they'll also be sold as fee simple. As you can see here, these will have a twenty-foot front setback. This will allow for two parking spaces in front of the garage, and then also taking opportunity through the restricted covenants for two spaces inside, getting us our four required parking spaces. Phasing, we're looking at really two phases. The main first phase, Phase 1A, will be the main pocket as you come in off of Last Cassis. Phase 1B will be more or less the construction of the bridge to bridge Bushman Creek between the, Phase 1 and Phase 2. Amenities, we're providing over twenty-five percent of this development will be left as some kind of open space or amenity area. The main amenity complex will be a clubhouse located along the eastern side of the Bushman Creek area on the, in Phase 1. They'll incorporate a outdoor patio and grilling area with that. And then associated with the clubhouse itself will also be a community garden, so that'll be a good place for this age-mark, this age-targeted group that want to come out and get active with each other and interact with one another, creating a garden place where they can go do some gardening, creating, you know, for herbs and other such, vegetables and such. Then also looking at incorporating a dog park in the overall program, just to the other side of the roadway with the, the actual clubhouse itself. And then again, the inclusion of the extra sidewalk along Pitts Lane and Last Cassis Pike that will allow us to have a circular loop for recreational running and jogging and walking, creating a great sense of public space. Every street within the, all the public streets within the development will have sidewalks on both sides of the street, so that'll help them with the overall pedestrian character of the neighborhood. Public alleyways, I mean, the private alleyways will not have any, any sidewalks, just be the public streets themselves. We're looking at two main primary access points. The main access point will be off of Last Cassis Pike with Phase 1. We'll work with the city engineer and TDOT to incorporate whatever traffic changes we need to make to the actual roadway itself. Definitely going to be looking at including a, a dedicated left-hand turn lane on the northbound side of things, heading away from town and towards the development to turn into the subdivision there. There could also be some other drainage changes on the southbound side of things, but it's one of those things we'll work with staff and the traffic engineering and TDOT to incorporate whatever's necessary from a traffic design standpoint. The other main entrance point, as we've talked about, will be on Cushing Avenue. And then we're looking at two stub streets to provide future connections to adjacent properties. And then one last point we have is we've, with the one roadway that comes down towards Pitts Lane, we're not looking at connecting to Pitts Lane at this time, but we are going to be dedicating right-of-way off of the end of the cul-de-sac there to the city, so that at any point in time the city feels it's, it's a necessity to make that connection, they can at least make that connection freely. Roadways, we talked about, they're being public and private. The purple roadway that you see crossing the property itself will be a fifty-foot right-of-way. That would be a private street with sidewalks on both sides. The yellow lines that you see drawn on the other streets are the more typical forty-foot right-of-way with sidewalks on both sides. And the red lines indicate the private alleyways throughout the development to handle the cottages. With that, I'm available for any questions now or after the public hearing. Thank you for your time.
Let's have one quick question.
Ms. Jones.
Mr. Mulchan, when you were showing the picture of the sidewalks or the slide that had the sidewalks, and you were talking about along Last Cassis and Pitts Lane, that looked more like a Greenway-style sidewalk. It was quite wide, but on the, along Last Cassis Pike and Pitts Lane, is that just a standard sidewalk, or is there a Greenway-type system going through the whole?
We're looking at a standard sidewalk on that, just, you know, it'd be a connection continuity between the northern portion there at the main entrance and coming back towards Pitts Lane over on that side.
Okay. Three-foot, four-foot, five-foot sidewalk?
I'll get five-foot.
Five-foot. Thank you.
And Ms. Jones, just to add on to that, there, there, when Last Cassis Pike is reconstructed and there would be sidewalk along Last Cassis Pike, that would be separate from this sidewalk. This would be a private sidewalk that would be a part of this development that would, there would be connectivity from that sidewalk to the public sidewalk, but this would be for the, the residents.
Okay.
And the public streets within the development curb and gutter and regular, uh, streetlights?
Yes, typical, typical cross-section from a roadway standpoint, and the streetlights will be standard MEDs.
Okay, what are you doing on the alleyways then?
We're going to be, we've talked with MED, we're going to be utilizing the standard streetlights in the alleyways as well. That was part of our discussion, and we outlined it in the pattern book as regards to working with MED to make certain that those streetlights are in appropriate locations based on, you know, MED standards and utilizing actual MED lights to light those alleyways up. So we'll be looking at it from the same standpoint. As a private, as a public street, the private alleyways will be functioning the same way.
Okay. What about curbs?
The, the alleyways themselves, there'll be a ribbon curb type of curb on that, so it'll be more or less a six-inch or one-foot in, in width ribbon curb that'll help maintain the asphalt with it.
Ribboned concrete curb. Okay, I just, I looked in there, I just didn't see it.
Yeah.
Chairman Lamb, I confirm what he said. Received confirmation from MED. Don't know exactly the style of streetlight that will be, that they will allow in the, in the alleys, but they said they do have a program where they can coordinate alley, alley lighting with the developer.
Okay, any other questions?
I've got one. On page eleven, this may be just a matter of semantics, but it says all cottages will be constructed of a mixture of brick, stone, cement board, and siding. Vinyl siding will be limited to fifteen percent on each of the front and rear elevations. Or, does that mean that this, the sides of these structures, the cottages, could all be vinyl siding?
No, the sides of the structures will be cement board. The fifteen percent in regards to, I'll have to double-check the language here, but vinyl siding will be limited to fifteen percent on the front and rear elevations. So when you look at those two elevations below, we're really talking about vinyl siding being used in those dormers or gable, you know, pieces of those elevations on the front and rear.
Right. I, I see that on page ten, but on page eleven, um... It's, it's just saying aloud on, I just want to make sure we're, we're clear that we're, what you're saying is, that, so you're going to have cement board siding on the side of these, of the cottages also?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Halliburton, I think that language could be cleaned up before, before City Council. I think that, I see what you're saying, there's a little bit of discrepancy there, especially in relation to the PowerPoint presentation, some of the language might be a little bit different, but I think that can be cleaned up to meet the intent of what he presented in his PowerPoint.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No questions from the Planning Commission, I'll open the public hearing.
Hi, Mr. Conover.
Yes, sir. Just state your name again for, for the record, sir.
Bobby Houston. I'm at 2859 Oakview Drive. And I told you about the flooding, and a guy got up here and said, "No, it ain't never..." But I've been there for like fifteen years, and it's been underwater a good half portion of that, which ain't even showing flood zone. And the other thing, the guy said, "Well, if we get out there and see any plastic." That thing burned at least two to three weeks, and fire department tried. All that's up under the ground, it ain't, it ain't going to be laying on. All that's done melted, went down in cracks and cubbages, and, uh, so you're not going to find plastic. If it burnt two weeks and the fire department can't put it out, it was all underground. And, uh, uh, let's say that's, that's, I'm going to make it short, but it, it has flooded way up there, and, and that guy was saying, "No, it, it can't get up." But it's, the flood zone's not right on it, because I've seen it three or four times, I've been there like fifteen years.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. Anybody else like to speak?
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Jerry Taylor. I live at 2664 Last Cassis Road. My property fronts lots, I believe it's 179 through 196. Anyway, I think it's a good development. I do have some concerns. One's drainage, one is traffic. If you look at, I believe it's Lot 196, you'll see a box covert that runs under Last Cassis Road. Okay, that box covert drains property on the northeast side. It drains property going to the east up Pitts Lane, it drains property back south on 96. So there's a lot of water coming into that box. If you'll look, you'll see the corner of my property would be the south, south corner. That water backs up on the south corner. Now, out Pitts Lane, if you go out east Pitts Lane, there's probably three hundred acres that can be developed back there. There's a lot of water that comes to that box, and the box backs up. I think probably part of the reason is due to vegetation over on the development site. It's all growed up, and once that's cleared out, I think Matthew said you were going to put piping or SAM, is that right? They were going to pipe it. So that might relieve it. The second thing is the traffic. In the morning time, from 7:15 till 8 o'clock, that traffic will back up past Two Hills subdivision. You've got another subdivision being developed out there now that's potentially going to have two hundred houses in it at some point. This development's going to have two hundred. If this property east around Pitts Lane is developed, that's three hundred more acres. And that traffic backs up, you cannot get out of the driveway in the morning. In addition, the road that they're building that's going to tie into 96 on the north end of the property, there's not going to be one street in and one street out until this thing builds out, and that could be three years, is that right? Build out. And the back street off Cushing will be done on the last, last part of the development, is that right? So all that traffic is, is hitting 96. And then the last thing, I've already talked to Water Sewer, I would hope that they would put a stub, a sewer stub, maybe down on that Pitts Lane, the street where the right-of-way's been dedicated. It's actually a county road that goes over the slab, uh, but run that east to the 96, because there's going to be future development. Some of the owners out there, including myself, we've already been contacted by developers. So it's coming. It's just a matter of time. The plastic the gentleman's talking about, that happened in about 1969, 1970. And it was plastic out there, and it did catch on fire. That's been a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anybody else? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Blomley, you have comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you Chairman Lamb. I think that Mr. Huddleston would probably be the appropriate person to address the, the drainage issue. And I think also, in my previous response to the blasting question, I may have oversimplified it, and Mr. Huddleston, I would ask him to maybe elaborate on that a little bit. As far as traffic, I think what, what I'd like to see, Mr. Mulchan and Mr. Taylor, is give a brief, give some brief information on the traffic that's going to be generated, and then Mr. Balachandra can address what potential improvements and possible signalization, and what the process would be for signalization for that, for that drive there.
Thank you Chairman Lamb. Mr. Blomley, I think you asked me to clarify a couple of things. In reviewing this plan with the applicant, we did identify the very significant drainage system that Mr. Taylor gave testimony about. TDOT thinks it's a significant drainage system, put a very large box covert in, and, and the land on that side's a little bit lower than the street, so it, water, we, we would think that water would build up, actually, to be able to flow through that box covert on, on his side. Talking with the design team, their plan is to pass this water through their property and not manage it, commingled it with their development water to the extent practical, so it's got a, a clear route to the stream, and, and I think that's, that has some wisdom to it. The drainage system it would take to, to carry this would be significant as well, so by providing that separate system to pass it through, it, it would avoid a lot of expense for them. The, the blasting that was, was, there was testimony in the, on the annexation portion actually applies to this, and blasting is regulated by the state. Blasters are required a license, they're required to, to meet certain safety standards, they're required to follow procedures. And I, I won't assume that, that there's never a blasting incident, because we know there are, but there are procedures in place for that. There's monitoring that's, is required, and pre-blast surveys. And the, the standard process is that it, the, the pre-blast survey is conducted, the blasting is monitored. If, if the homeowner or property owner of any type car, building whatever, believes they have an issue, they can contact the city fire marshal and the state fire marshal. The blasting companies are required to carry insurance, and, and it really requires that a claim be made about damage for blasting. City doesn't deliberate in that. We, we only help the, the complaint get to the right place and make sure that the blasting is operated in a safe manner. But, but the, the blasters carry insurance, and their insurance claims that are paid from time to time. And, and so that, that procedure's in place to help protect adjacent property owners from, from blast damage, and, and there's a mechanism there. Will someone not have to hire a lawyer? You know, sometimes that is required, and that's an option for, for dispute resolution. But, but again, that's all regulated by the state, and, and we try to help accommodate the, the citizens and residents navigate that system. I'd be glad answering questions on those two or any other questions that you might have on that.
Yeah, Mr. Huddleston, with the expressed concern of the soil testing and the, that what took place back in the late 60s, do you have any idea as to the depth that the testing would take place within that soil?
You know, I'd be, be uncomfortable offering any sort of opinion on that. I have only heard the testimony given here. I haven't personally investigated that. I, I don't, I don't think there's any debate that, that something transpired with the plastic disposal and a fire. I think we were confident that that has happened. Is there an issue that needs to be addressed before construction progresses and before homes go there? The, I, I think the, the developer is, we're going to have to rely on them to do their diligence to do that. We don't have regulations. If, if there's contamination there, that's really a state-level issue, and we can help an applicant or help a developer navigate that system and point them in the right direction, but, but, but we have no city ordinances to require that. And so we're, we're really very limited on, on what we can do on that, except point them in the right directions as far as consulting help and then regulatory help to the state of Tennessee.
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Huddleston? Thank you, sir. Mr. Balachandra, you want to talk about the traffic and signalization?
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. I would like Matt to come up and actually give a little summary of the traffic that's generated before I present to you all some of the processes that we have to go through for signalization in the future.
Okay. Matt was hoping you'd ask him, he hadn't been up tonight.
Yeah, I was, I was missing it. Yeah, so we- Yeah, I was, I was missing it. Um, yes, uh, we, we've not done a formal traffic study, but we do know that T-DOT's gonna require a left turn lane into the site and possibly a right turn lane in the future. And so we have anticipated both of those things, um, with our project. Um, I, I think that, um, you know, part of the issue with the backup is definitely a lot of traffic going down to Dejarnet and hanging a riot, and that motion to get back to the school. One of the first conversations that we had with staff when we come, um, to talk about this project was the bridge, to make sure we've got this extra connectivity across Bushman Creek here. And so I think that will help alleviate to a certain degree. Uh, I believe some of that will probably encumber our residents of the development, but, uh, we've tried to, um, make the streets as, um, uh, kind of intertwined, if you will, as best that we can there to, uh, help people not to do that. But, um, we do think that's gonna help, along with, um, the additional stubs to the surrounding properties. Uh, those will, uh, provide some additional alleviation in the future, once those properties get developed out, so.
Any, any, Matt, any thought process to, um, having access to Cushing before, um, Phase 3 or whatever the last phase is completed?
Well, really, we've just got two phases that's proposed. And so Phase 1 would be, would get, um, the access on the Last Cassis, which is really a kind of a front door for us, marketing-wise. And then Phase 2, as soon as the bridge is brought online, that's gonna be a very long construction timeframe, I think. And so as soon as that bridge comes online, we'll be able to connect back over to Cushing. So, uh, the bridge is gonna be the constraining point as far as the timeframe goes right there. And that's why we've broken that phase up, so we don't have both sides in the same phase. We'd like to mass grade most of the site together, um, and then that bridge being, uh, built out while they're building homes in Phase 1.
Is there a time constraint on construction of the bridge and the finishing of Section 2? In other words, if the developer decided he was not gonna go ahead and do Section 2, and therefore would not do the bridge because of economic conditions, uh, where are we then?
Great question.
Chairman, I'm not sure that we have, definitely the bridge is part of Phase 2. Uh, we did feel comfortable with the single access on the Phase 1 development side. Uh, if we didn't, we would have definitely asked them to connect to, to the little stub of Pitts. The reason we didn't do that is because of the proximity of Pitts to the light. It actually causes more problems than, than it would fix, because we, as was previously stated, we know that that intersection does queue back. That's the reason we pushed the entrance to this Phase 1 as far back as we could, and lined it up with the Marshall Construction across the street to have those, um, offsets. Uh, so we felt comfortable with the one access for Phase 1. That is a good question. We have thought about that, but at some point in time, we know Phase 2 with all developments eventually will be done. And, uh, but, uh, really, I didn't see another way to get out unless we connected to an existing county subdivision, and that would have not been very popular, uh, with the people that are adjacent to this development.
No, I'm just thinking, in case of, uh, building bridges are, is an expensive proposition. And, uh, I don't think I'll be on the planning commission when it comes around, but I could see somebody in the future saying, you know, maybe a future developer that takes over the project saying, "Well, we'll do Section 2, but we don't wanna build the bridge. We just wanna..."
We do, and that is, like I said, a good question, but we did have them put the right-of-way up to Pitts in case we, in the future, um, if for some reason we decide that that did need to be opened up, we do have that ability. And if you look on the plan, you can see we had them to extend that, that right-of-way to that little stub of Pitts. So, it could actually be, it could be a secondary way out if, in fact, we choose to do that. We prefer not to do it at this time, but I guess if the development was not gonna move forward, it could be connected.
And Chairman Lam, another safeguard is there is a stub to the undeveloped property to the northwest. So, um, in the event that property develops there, um, if, if nothing develops west of, of Bushman Creek, there's the potential for three access points into the subdivision with the main road coming off Last Cassis Pike, the stub to the property to the northwest, and the possible connection, um, via the dedicated right-of-way to East Pitts Lane that, that Mr. Whitaker mentioned.
So, would we, if, if we were just looking at a 123-lot subdivision, uh, would we approve that with one access point, really? One in, in and out? I don't know, 123 lots, is that, you know, is that something we would or wouldn't allow?
I think typ- typically, at the very least, if there was only one access point onto an existing public street, we would provide stubs to future development, so there would be more than one access.
And so you're not, it's not a problem if there's only 123? I mean, there's an awful lot of stub streets all over the city that, you know, they've been there for 20 and 30 years, and when we come along and now they're connecting, people are like, "I didn't know that was ever gonna happen." So, the stub street can be there for a long time before the develop, rest of the development ever occurs, so.
As, as Mr. Houston, he, he's got a stub street there on, uh, Oakview Drive, and it's been there for 40 years, I guess. 30-something anyway. But, uh, you know, but, but it's not gonna be connected now with this project coming in, and I'm sure they want it that way. I don't blame them. But I just have concerns on the future, whatever materialized like we're, uh, talking about.
What is the thought process, if any, to escrow the bridge, at least the bridge cost?
Well, I, I talked to my client, and in, on the phasing plan, we've outlined a portion of Phase 2 on the west side, as well as a portion of Phase 2 that's on the east side of Bushman. And, uh, we have called the bridge Phase 1B, and so we're willing to commit that we won't construct any of Phase 2, including what's on the east side of Bushman, without that bridge being in place. And so we won't, we won't, and we can outline that, we can put that in the book, that, uh, we would not construct any of the lots or homes or roads on the east side in Phase 2 without that bridge being in place. So, the bridge would have to be in place before we moved into any part of Phase 2.
So, if you sold it to another developer, he'd be bound by what was in the book?
Yes.
We approved.
Exactly.
Unless he'd be back in for a...
Unless they come back to y'all and y'all grant him a reprieve.
And Ms. Green has on the laptop the phasing plan. If, uh, if the cable department could pull up what's on the laptop, you'll see the blue area is Phase 2, so there's about a quarter to a third of, of what's east of Bushman Creek is in Phase 2. And Phase 1A is the area in the, uh, the purple pink, and, uh, Phase 2 is in the blue or purple. I'm starting to sound like Mr. Whitaker.
I'm, I'm sorry. I can't follow that. I'm just gonna take your word for it.
Violet in fuchsia.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Any other questions from Mr., Mr. Matt? Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Now, we were gonna have some comments from traffic.
Oh, yes, Ram, I almost led you off the hook. Silly of me.
The development itself with, uh, about 200 homes are not going to warrant a traffic signal, just the traffic volumes generated by those homes. So, the connectivity to Cushing and looking at the school traffic and some traffic that is on Last Cassis and on Cushing in the future may, and that's something that we will have to study. Uh, it may take two years, it may take three years. Uh, but until then, um, you know, we can't tell if a signal will be warranted. That's the first process. The second is because Last Cassis Pike is a state highway, we will have to go through state approval process for signalization. But what we have done, Mr. Lam, is, um, and we will work very closely with the design engineer on the turn lanes, to make sure that there are right turn lanes to take the traffic, the right turning traffic generated by this development out of the true traffic, which is already bumper-to-bumper now, uh, during the peak hour. So, they will be building a left turn lane and a right turn lane into this site, so that they will not be, uh, hindering the true capacity of that roadway.
Okay. Thank you, Ram. Any other comments or questions? We're ready for our motion.
Chairman Lam, I did want to request that you make any approval contingent upon the applicants, including the floor plans and the, and the pattern books that will go to city council. One of the things that we tasked them with, because they're using the garages for the villas to store their garbage cans, is to make sure they could store Part 2 large SUVs in there and the garbage cans. They're doing so with the villas, and on the cottage units, they have a courtyard where they'll be storing the, the garbage can. So, we wanna make sure that's included in the book that goes to council.
Yes, and cleaning up the language about the vinyl siding.
And his commitment to, uh...
Make sure the state, the language in there pertaining to the future of the bridge is, is clear pertaining to no other development in Phase 2 will be done without the bridge being built.
Yes, sir.
Okay, ready for motion.
Then I'll make a, a motion, uh, subject to each of those three or four things we just laid out regarding the bridge, the floor plans, the...
Vinyl siding wording.
Siding.
What he said.
What he said.
That's right.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda this evening. Move right on to our most favorite part, the staff reports and other business. Mr. Director?
I have none at this time.
That's a wonderful report. Mr. Counselor, you have any?
I have, I have nothing.
There's no further business. We stand adjourned.